County, and I felt that I needed to do something different, and I wanted something more, and I wanted to offer my skills. So I told my friend, I don't know what to do, and I was thinking about my next steps. And she said, Maria, did you think about applying to a job at the city of Northport? They have a different vibe here. And she said, I'd love it. And I said, oh, I can think about that. So I applied, and I started my first position in a planning and zoning in our Development Services Department. I'm partnered with the Building Department because the fees are assessed off of the building permits, and it's strictly for new construction, new development. And the first thing I do is to check the spreadsheet, to look at the permits, and determine which ones need me to estimate their impact fees. And that's where I start with that. Then I go to numbers that I have to put together, and I put together the invoices for our developers. Oftentimes, I'll get phone calls to give quotes before the development comes through, and so developers want to know how much they can budget for. So sometimes I put through proposed estimates to help them with that. And the bulk of it is making sure that the fees are in the system as fast as possible. I love the Esprit de Corps that I experience, just how everybody teamwork together. I enjoy knowing that I can make a difference for the city and that my position can have a positive impact for our city.
I am the Emergency Management Coordinator for the city of Northport, and we're going to talk about why it's important to have a go-kit and what should go inside of it. It's important to have a go-bag because if you wait last minute to pack, there are definitely going to be items that you are going to forget in the scramble to get everything put together. So it's important to have your documents such as IDs, insurance paperwork, titles for your home, and your vehicles, and your boats, just so that if your home does flood or your roof blows off, all those documents are with you, and they're safe because you don't want to end up losing those and having to try to replace those later on. Also, in your go-bag, you should think about what medications you might need to have ahead of time. If we're under a state of emergency, you are able to refill your prescriptions ahead of time, even if they're not due yet. So it's important to do that. Also, in your go-bags, you should have non-perishable food, flashlight, batteries, a radio that is battery-powered, and extra batteries. Should all power go out, we will be able to broadcast on 97.5 FM anything, any emergency information. So be sure to have your battery-powered radio ready and tuned in to 97.5.
Today's Monday, June 2, 2025. It's 10:00 a.m. We're in the city chambers, and I call the City Commission Workshop Meeting to order. Commissioners present are Commissioner Duval, Commissioner Langdon, Mayor Stokes, Vice Mayor Emrich, and Commissioner Petro. There is a quorum present for the meeting. Also present, City Manager Fletcher, interim City Attorney Golan, City Clerk Faust, Board Specialist Lane. Oh, Captain King, I'm sorry. And Chief Titus. Ms. West, would you care to do the honors?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
All righties. City Clerk, any public comments?
None.
We move on to presentations. A 25-2229, presentation by the Northport Natural Resources Division regarding Northport Environmental Scorecard. City Manager, your item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to introduce Mr. Stefan Kaliv, who is our Natural Resources Manager, to lead us through the presentation of the environmental scorecard. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, Stefan Kaliv, Natural Resources Manager, for the record. So today, I will speak about the environmental scorecard. It's an initiative of our Natural Resources Division. Few words as an introduction. So our city is a vibrant and beautiful, growing city that's known for its unique natural resources. The importance for environmental monitoring is to ensure the health and well-being of the community and preserving natural resources for future generations. I will speak a bit more in depth about the environmental scorecard efforts towards monitoring water quality, air quality, tree canopy, wildlife, and other natural resources division So regarding tree canopy, this is one of the key areas of focus of our team, and through the tree canopy assessment that we have already conducted, we have initiated tracking this parameter. Now, we want to know more about the overall condition of the canopy. We want to measure the percent coverage, and we want to monitor changes over time. So this will provide opportunities to prioritize tree planting efforts in areas of need, and of course, better understanding of factors such as the heat island effect throughout the city. Tree planting and rewilding projects will also be of notice towards this parameter that we would like to track. The next one is water quality. So drinking water, it's something of crucial significance for our community, and our Utilities Department is already doing a fantastic job tracking and monitoring various parameters of our drinking water supply. So the intent of our scorecard is to have these parameters presented within as well, and to have that as part of our water quality effort. So then the next one is surface water quality. We are currently measuring 11 parameters at seven locations throughout the city. And in addition, there's various potential sources where we can obtain some of this data and include that data in our environmental scorecard. Some of the various potential sources can be DEP, SWIFTMUD, Sarasota County, of course, other departments within the city, coastal and heartland national estuary program, and their incredible water-at-last resource, and many others. Another crucial parameter that we would like to include on our scorecard is the air quality index. So this would include data of air quality, particulate matter at 2.5 microns, then particulate matter at 10 microns, ozone, nitrous dioxide, sulfur dioxide, carbon monoxide, and others. I would like to take a moment to point out our internal air quality monitoring that's currently ongoing with the city, and this is a program that was developed by our Natural Resources Division. It provides real-time monitoring capabilities, and it's easily available on our webpage. The next crucial category that will be a part of the environmental scorecard is the wildlife one. As you all know, we have numerous invasive species, and summarizing potential encounters, potential recordings, potential areas with high presence of invasive species that may have been reported through our online reporting tool will be a part of that scorecard category. Additional wildlife reporting will be included as well. Conservation areas will be also mentioned, and then temporary sign placement summary of our temporary gopher tortoise sign program that we also have with the city. Its outcome will be summarized as part of the scorecard. Listed species permits and permit reviews and future initiatives will also be presented. The next category is one of extreme significance for our community. It will pertain to floodplain and storm management. So as part of our vulnerability assessment efforts with the city, there will be some of the work and some of the findings of our new Natural Resources floodplain administrator. Some of his data and his findings will be easily available to the community through this scorecard item. Also, stormwater and floodplain parameters will be summarized and explained to the community. Also, of course, the community rating system, and the, in the future, our watershed master plan, which we are in process of applying for through a grant, those will be mentioned to some extent as well. Some other scorecard parameters include trees that would be donated by the city's natural resources team, trees planted with specifying the areas where those trees will be planted, community educational event summary, number, approximate number of citizens engaged or assisted throughout the year, and numbers of inspections and reviews. Finally, our Northport Greenest Citizen efforts and progress will be documented as part of the scorecard. And I have few visuals that I would like to share with our commission and community. So with the scorecard, we want to keep it simple, yet informative, data-driven, and straight to the point. We want to get to the parameters that are of most concern and highest significance. The visual will allow our community to clearly understand the impacts and to clearly understand where we are as a city as far as these important parameters: water quality, air quality, tree canopy, wildlife, and biodiversity, and others. So as you see in this example, the findings will be summarized, there will be strong visual support, so our citizens and residents will be able to easily interpret the data. Less is more, in a way. So there's another visual with what we would like to be presenting. Before I conclude, I just wanted to specify that this is a scorecard that will be generated on an annual basis by our team and easily and clearly communicated with our residents through our fantastic multiple channels that we have for that communication. Its successful implementation really relies on numerous teams' efforts. However, the Natural Resources Team is willing and capable to spearhead this program, and we believe that this will inform and educate our community about all the things that we do and other entities do throughout the city. As a conclusion, tracking environmental parameters for the city, it's an important goal that we have, and it's something that was brought up multiple times by our Environmental Advisory Board, and it's, we believe, a fantastic way to educate and to help our residents understand what we're doing. We have parameters to incorporate other, excuse me, we have the potential to incorporate other parameters in the future. We are open for constructive feedback, and we're excited to get this going and perhaps only make it better as we go. As mentioned earlier, the goal is to have easy-to-interpret data, and based on this data, we can, we as a city can perhaps adjust our goals and address current and future challenges based on patterns that we see emerging. Continuous engagement with Northport residents and organizations for suggestions and insights will be a critical part of this effort. With that, I wanted to thank you, and I would gladly answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, who's up? Commissioner Duval?
Yes, I have a couple of comments and questions. You were talking about measuring 11 different parameters for water in seven different locations. Back in my hometown, a guy I went to high school with, or school with, he's a retired high school biology teacher, and he actually is part of a civilian, a citizen group that they measure for the community. They do all sampling. It's just a thought that, you know, to try and save on some of our employees' times, maybe we could try to implement a program where citizens could pick up the samples. On wildlife reporting, this is a tough one because I see it all the time, and it bothers me. I see new homes being built, and, you know, we have a lot of gopher tortoises in this city. And supposedly, you know, before the homes are built, the lot is surveyed, and, you know, and they properly get the permits and, you know, move gopher tortoises as needed. But what I'm seeing, and I could show you an example of my street today, where a house is being built on one side of the street, and the empty lot on the other side of the street is being used for a dumpster. It's being used for dump trucks and other vehicles that are backing in there, right where there are gopher tortoise burrows, and I just wonder who's watching that. My last comment is about the tree canopy. I happen to be reading in last year's budget book, and in one section, I saw something that said the city would like to try to maintain like a 34% canopy. And as part of that, the city had a plan for the year 2025 to be planting, don't quote me on this because I looked at this a few weeks ago, but I think it said that the city was planning on planting 500 trees this year. And I'm just wondering, we're on the 1st of June, how many, any idea how many of those trees have been planted?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. I don't have the exact number of trees for this year. However, I would like to point out that we are currently in the procurement phase for some planting projects that we have lined up, and it's something that we are working on. I am not convinced that for this year, we'll be able to be close to this goal. However, it's something that we certainly want to expand and put more trees in the ground.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I love that idea of citizen-community involvement. I think that just really generates a lot of support and commitment to the program, so that's a great suggestion, and I would support that. You had mentioned that some parameters are measured by others, SWIFTMUD, some of them our utilities team is already tracking. My question is, can you give me an idea of what the incremental level of effort will be for your team in the city in pulling together the scorecard?
Yes, ma'am. This would be an effort that we would like to track and compile in an annual environmental scorecard report. So this data will be gathered from different entities, consolidated, and placed in a report generated annually.
Okay. And what's the level of effort in producing that report, doing the assessment? Is it a 40-hour task? Is it a 400-hour task? And again, incremental, because some other groups are doing it, I'm not so concerned about that. Utilities already monitors some of those parameters for water. But for those parameters that aren't currently measured, what's your very rough, back-of-the-envelope assessment of how many person-hours are we looking at?
With most of the data being available online, I don't foresee as many hours being spent by staff as I initially thought. I would say perhaps for this first scorecard, we're looking at 60 to 80 hours of staff time.
So it sounds like the task is more assembling the information, doing the research, and producing the report. Terrific, because when I first read it, I went, ooh, how big is this thing? I mean, I'm supportive of it. I think you have, you're measuring just the right things. But it's important that we know what the incremental effort is going to be. And then you also mentioned that the scorecard will be easy to interpret. What might that look like? And I'll give you an analogy. When I have my blood work done by my doctor, they sort of provide what's the healthy range, and then what my score is, and you can kind of interpret where we're at. What does that easy-to-interpret look like? Because if you throw those numbers at me, they're going to mean nothing to me.
That's exactly what we were also thinking, where more visuals and more ways to see what's the range of where the normal state is for each of these parameters will be helpful. So that's exactly, we have not narrowed it down to this point. However, we want to perhaps even include some color coding and some type of a range so our residents will be able to, exactly, see what's our, so to say, grade of each of these parameters.
Okay. How will the scorecard be communicated to us and to the community? How will you be disseminating that information?
We're going to work with our communications team and use their expertise to spread the word out to our community in as many ways as possible. We believe that transparency is key here, and we have a fantastic team with the city who can assist with that.
Okay. Let's see. Refresh my memory, what's a heat island?
The heat island effect is if you have an area within the city with high rate of development and high percentage of concrete, asphalt, surface, rooftops, as a cumulative effect of all these areas absorbing the energy from the sun, the heat energy from the sun, this actually raises the overall temperature of an entire area. So the research suggests that these areas can dramatically increase the average temperature of a region because of the way that some of these man-made surfaces absorb the heat energy from the sun, and then it ultimately becomes like, like an area that's radiating heat and raising the overall temperature.
And so this will allow us to identify those areas in the city so we can do specific remediation? What would the, how do we fix that? What could you envision being the fix?
The first step would be to identify those areas, and then by knowing where we may have some of those heat island concerns, perhaps we can dedicate more significant planting areas towards these places, as they would need more of that canopy to counterbalance the heat island effect.
Okay, great. I think that is it. I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioners, anybody else? Mr. Petro?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very interested in the environmental scorecard development and its implementation, simply because it improves the quality of life. I have a couple of questions regarding the tree and tree canopy. I do believe the tree fund was established 20, or the revision or whatever, was established 2024? Or was it new?
It was established before that. I know that there were some changes with our Unified Land Development Code in, I believe, 2022 and 2024, but from my understanding, we've had the tree fund prior to that. With the new environmental, with the new Unified Land Development Code, it's now known as the Environmental Protection Fund.
One question on the tree canopy. How do you measure and how, you said annual, on an annual basis? Can you refresh, and maybe I missed it because I was doing some other things? What's the goal of the tree canopy and what it is now in the city of Northport?
Yes, sir. So we have certain percentages of canopy coverage mentioned within our comprehensive plan, and I, off the top of my head, I believe that it's between 34% to another percent value. However, the goal of the canopy study is to see this and to track and monitor this canopy coverage throughout the city. and to track and monitor this canopy coverage throughout the city. It's challenging to set a specific value and specific canopy coverage as a goal because there are many, many other factors. And we also have some areas throughout the city that are um, preserves or parks. So, but the idea here is to track the change, to see where we may experience highest loss and where we may be able to concentrate more of our efforts. The way that the study works is that it uses aerial imagery from different years and then based on the coverage that's present on these images, we could establish a trend of where the most significant loss of canopy throughout the city is.
So the actual um, uh, measuring would be done on an annual basis? That's what you're saying, correct?
For the tree canopy, the, the previously defined goal is to conduct it on a bi-annual basis just because uh, there's more, there is more extensive resources needed to conduct it. And also um, the aerial imagery updates of the software that we're using, they're not always happening on annual basis as well.
Thank you. I'm just, I'm so in favor of planting more trees um, as a city, on a public space or on the public right-of-way spaces. Trees are vital component of our ecosystem and it provides shade and comfort. Uh, for example, I have, well, I had three oaks, oak trees, and one was damaged by the hurricane. But the other two, they're just really nice shade when you go outside. If I go outside to the front of my house, it's like a Sahara Desert. It's like, it's impossible to stand in one place. If I go to my backyard, it's so comforting to sit, to walk. So I wish we can do more. And um, I don't want to be too specific, but out of that tree fund, how much the actual amount of money do we spend to planting those trees? Do you have that information?
I do not have that information, sir. But perhaps we can find that for you.
Good morning. Elena Ray, Director of Development Services. Um, right now, we have allocated, I want to say a little over a million dollars to plant trees. Um, as Mr. Caleb mentioned earlier, we're in the procurement process right now. We've already been through the design phase. So we have multiple projects that the commission approved uh, that have now been designed. We had to design irrigation and work with um, our Parks Department and Public Works to ensure that plantings were going to be um, um, the type that wouldn't interfere with other infrastructure or aquatic operations, those types of things. So that design phase took a while. Now we're in procurement. We should be, hopefully we'll be putting uh, shovels in the ground for our next planting season. And um, but it's, it's, I want to say it's a little over a million dollars towards planting trees.
Great. Uh, in the spring of the year, we as a board, we've uh, visited Tallahassee for the legislative session. I was amazed at the tree canopy the city of Tallahassee had. I mean, it's amazing. So I think it's doable. Uh, it's very attainable and feasible to do it. So I just want to see the more information put out, how many trees we planted on those scorecard, like the actual quantitative amounts. That would be very helpful to us and to the citizen. Um, and what, what do you, would you do as far as incorporating volunteers? Do you solicit volunteers? I'm sure there's a big segment of our city, uh, of the conservationists would be willing to do volunteer work. How do you advertise or how do you do that?
We are actively working with our ci, with our city community on many different levels. We are engaging with volunteers. And I think that this is something that will only grow and strengthen in the future. I, in my opinion, this is a fantastic point and that's, that's a resource that we have that um, can and should be utilized. And um, as you mentioned, they want to be engaged as well. I know that there's um, challenges when you um, have volunteers do actual work pertaining to factors such as liability. However, there are many opportunities to get volunteers on board and uh, we have a great group of passionate individuals here, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, I have a couple of things. One, thank you very much for putting this together. We appreciate it. It's good to get updated on what's going on. Um, I have a couple of questions. Um, I noticed on the, the uh, scorecard, it, I didn't see anything unless I missed it um, about, you know, focusing a little on environmentally sensitive land purchases. I mean, there's, there are a number of areas in the city. There's a number of air, you know, land parcels throughout the city that, that are sensitive. And, and I didn't really see anything here that focused on our ability to try to preserve them, conserve them, purchase them if they're privately owned and make sure that some of these lands were actually set aside and weren't developed. And um, so I'd love to see something of that nature included in this because I think that's important. Um, you know, the Nature Conservatory does its best to buy property up, but you know, we have a lot of property. I think we need to, to make a real effort. And that draws me into the other item, which is the floodplain and, and stormwater management. Um, you know, I understand, I guess we're going to look for a grant to do a watershed master plan. Um, have you uh, taken a look at the two thousand eighteen Big Slough watershed plan? That, you know, probably has got about eleven inches of dust on it at this point. But, you know, um, are you aware of that study that was done?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We are aware with, of this study and our floodplain administrator has reviewed its findings. And I believe that some of the data will still be very beneficial for our city comprehensive watershed master.
Okay. I mean, what is the, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't know whether or not you guys are just going to budget within your departmental budget or division budget for doing this master plan or whether it'll come before the commission to approve. But I'd like to try to understand what the end game is. You know, um, over the years, obviously the city's done a lot of studies on a lot of things and, and they are valuable in and of themselves because they point to needs, they point to challenges. Um, you know, we have some obvious serious challenges of, of stormwater management in the city. And there is really not much that money can't fix. Money being the critical element here. And nothing like a couple of hundred million dollars to help solve some of the stormwater management problems we have. So, you know, I, I have some concerns in, in the economic environment we live in to make sure that if we're going to spend money doing a lot of studies and master plans and investigations, that there be some realistic end game, you know. Um, so, you know, I'm, I'm looking forward to learning a lot more about this master plan and what all is envisioned here and, you know, what the end game is and, and what value it will bring other than to point out the need that we have a problem. Um, and, and, you know, a part of that touches on things like air quality and, and, and um, you know, water quality. I, I, I appreciate and, and I don't want this taken in the wrong way. I appreciate the need to evaluate our air and water qualities. But a lot of agencies do it. Um, a lot of this information is available publicly. Um, organizing it into something that our citizens, those that are interested, could actually go and look to. I think probably has some value. I would just caution that it be something that we carefully marshal our resources on, as Commissioner Langdon said, because, you know, a, again, you know, walking the Natural Resource Division back to where it started, you know, my focus has always been that this division should be focused on planting trees, helping to maintain tree canopies in areas that have been diminished. Um, where our dollars are really going to make serious contributions to enhancing the environment. And, and so Commissioner Petro's question about how many dollars get devoted here, there and everywhere, it's important that we do appreciate that over the years while we use the tree fund to fund your department and, or your division and get it up and running. The idea is to wean off of those dollars and get more and more of those dollars devoted to planting trees, doing landscaping things, doing things that enhance the environmental quality of our city and, and not maintain and sustain a bureaucracy and a reporting process or a duplication of some of those services that others do. So, you know, I, I just have concern only because as we move into the budget year, I appreciate every department's going to come and present what they do in their mission statements and what they'd like to see to the betterment of the city. But I think, you know, to set the proper tone going forward, everything's about return on investment in this city. And the dollars that our taxpayers invest, we want to see a serious return on and focused on the priorities within the pillars of our city. So I appreciate everything you guys do. I just don't want to see you guys get spread so thin that the original focus of the division gets a little cloudy. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, good morning. That was a wonderful presentation. Um, in your presentation, did you state that you were going to be monitoring uh, invasive species? Reason I ask that is we just had a lengthy conversation about Warmail Springs and the conservation easement and who was to maintain and who wasn't going to maintain. We hadn't, you know, didn't know what was going on there. And I just hated to wait till the end and, and they tell us, hey, you got to clean this stuff up because it's overgrown twice old now. Would that be in fact be part of your uh, scorecard going into, let's say we accept the conservation easement as it goes. We accept it. This way, if you checked it on an annual basis, we would know way ahead of time when we would have to address the invasive species before it got too, too big and too costly. So would that be part of your parameters I'm looking into going forward?
Something that we can definitely consider. And part of the, for the invasive species parameter, we will certainly need the community's um, input as we don't have the resources to walk throughout each of these areas and monitor potential ca, coverage of invasive species. However, there are some tools where uh, that are easily available online with, where pe, uh, citizens are citing and documenting invasive species. So we won't take that into consideration. But pertaining to this question I made.
Let me just add one thing. And, and I understand that throughout the whole city. But this in fact would be city property that we would be looking at and, and just at that. So, I mean, it's like taking care of our own business.
Lori Barnes, Deputy Director of Development Services, um, to address both Mayor, Mayor's questions and yours, Commissioner Emmerich. Um, we will be as part of the budget process bringing forward a proposal uh, to set aside funds for acquisition of environmentally sensitive lands. Stefan and his team are currently uh, evaluating and ranking some high priority properties that we will be bringing to the commission to get some direction on which properties the commission would like to see us pursue or purchase. Um, as far as the um, you know, budget is concerned, you'll also have some planting projects coming forward with the budget. You'll have um, some matching grant funds that will help us apply for available grants in the future. If we complete our citywide watershed plan, we will be eligible for other grant opportunities to make improvements to our stormwater systems. Without that watershed master plan, we may not qualify or rank high when we apply for those types of grants. As far as invasive species management, we do have a performance dashboard that is separate from the environmental scorecard. We could consider incorporating some performance metrics as far as invasive species removal on that performance dashboard where we also advertise how many trees we planted. Um, we have a budget proposal for removal of exotic invasive species on city-owned property. And we do plan to engage a contractor to handle some of those high-profile properties, um, including, you know, Public Works Right-of-Ways where we have invasive species overtaking the existing vegetative communities. And when it comes to management on city-owned properties, especially those that may have a conservation easement placed on them, it's our intent, if we move to purchase properties through um, our budget proposal, that we can, that we, where possible, partner with volunteer community organizations such as the Natural Conservancy to take over that maintenance responsibility. And they themselves will address the ongoing exotic species management for those parcels. And as part of those conservation agreements, we could even um, in, incorporate a management plan so that we have a measure of expectations for those outside organizations. And then Stefan and his team can monitor, monitor those management plans.
I thank you because we did have a lengthy conversation and I think it sort of went in two different directions. By the time the conster, the conversation was over to where I'd like to get back on track to where we can go through and discuss the conservation easement. And this way we all know what the parameters are, what we're responsible for, this, that and the other. So if you have a plan already, that's great. I just want to, it might ease the talks the next time it comes up. That's all I'm saying because we were, we were just a little, I guess, flabbergasted on-
Under-
On what happened in the last conversation.
Understood. That conversation was interesting and Development Services will be huddling up with Parks and Rec and uh, talking to our outside partners before we bring the presentation back to the commission on that particular property in the future.
Yeah. And I think everybody on this board was in favor of it. It was just, how do we get to it? So I appreciate that. Now, my other question is, um, since we're still on invasive species, I'm just going to go to a different category of invasive species and mosquitoes because that's all part of the environment as well. And you knew where this was coming from. And I know you've been working on it very, very hard, Stefan. But what I would like to see is instead of people out there complaining on Facebook saying, oh, I got beat up by mosquitoes last night. They were coming in, blah, blah, blah. Maybe have a little portal to where we can monitor where these hotspots are. If it happens to be, let's say the Warmail Springs area, whatever. We know that we have an overabundance of mosquitoes in this area. Let's get with the county. Let's get it rectified. And maybe they do an extra spraying or whatnot. Or maybe it's off Haberlin out the east end or it's down in center of town. But to have a portal to where they could come in, say, hey, I live on X Street and we were just overindated. And then you, let's say there's a hundred residents in that area. Now you know you have a problem in that area. So maybe incorporating something like that either in that dashboard or your, what you're presenting today to where we can just track it. And that gives us a little bit more ammunition when we do go talk to the county and say, hey, guys are dropping the ball. Once again, we need help. So I know, I know it's been a long-going battle and, and I know you helped out quite a bit and I appreciate that. So that, that was just a suggestion. See where you want to take it.
Thank you, sir.
Stefan, to follow up with what, what Vice Mayor said, I wasn't even going to discuss mosquitoes, but, but I do have a question. Um, you know, I know you guys did a bit of work and interface with the county on this and went through a process of education and understanding as to what they do. I myself, last year or the year before, went up and, and spent some time with the county to try to understand better the issue. Um- to try to understand better the issue. Is the county, I mean, I wonder if sometimes the problem, I mean, you can divide the mosquito issue up into two areas. You know, one is disease control, the issue of that, you know, mosquitoes in certain cases carry disease. And my understanding and my takeaway from what I learned was that the county primarily focuses on mosquito disease control. It doesn't necessarily focus on mosquito control in itself. And so I wondered, did, did you hear or see anything different than that? I mean, will they go out if a neighborhood has a lot of mosquitoes, but they don't detect from their testing and from their sampling any disease? Will they come and spray? I mean, they certainly don't have anywhere near the adequate staff to cover the entire county. And my understanding was they focused specifically on areas that were, you know, we had pockets of disease-ridden mosquitoes. So, you know, to say, oh, I live near a creek or I live near what, and, and I got mosquitoes everywhere, I mean, is, is it even realistic to think there's ever gonna, we're ever gonna address that problem?
Thank you for the question, Mayor. So from my experience working with them, I have noticed great level of expertise and a, from what I was shown, a sophisticated tracking system of where some of the concerns are. And then from my understanding, they, they address that through their online ticketing or complaint system that they have in place. But as I was explained by them, by Mr. Brennan with Mosquito Management Services, their goal is, of course, preventing the spread of disease, but also managing the mosquito population. And this is why, as he said, it's Mosquito Management Services because it's a problem that you won't eradicate, but you still want to manage. So this is what was explained to me. I have seen some, some positive updates pertaining to developing a monitoring and larva site, larva sighting program within the Maia State Forest, which I know was a big concern of the community. And that agreement has been signed between the county and the state. And we are also working with our Public Works Department to meet with the Mosquito Management Services team on quarterly basis to identify some of their concerns and to potentially work together where we may, we as, as a city may treat some of those water lettuce areas, and then they may follow up with a, with a larva site or adulticide application to kind of tackle those hotspots. But I have seen, I, I have seen a wealth of knowledge in them and efforts to manage the problem. They have their tracking system where our residents can relay their concerns directly through them. And I believe our webpage also links our residents directly to the county's webpage for concerns. That's all that I'm aware of.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Want to thank you very much for the effort or to keep plugging at it.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Any public comment? Okay, then moving on to presentation speed 25 days, 2315, presentation by Gail West regarding current status and future of the Northport Art Center. City manager, introduce that item, please.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We are joined by Ms. Gail West, the, are you the president of the volunteer in Northport?
Yes, sir. President of the board.
Yes, president of the board. We thank her for joining us and sharing the presentation to give us a status update on the project.
I'm Gail West. I am the volunteer president for the board of the Northport Art Center. On April 22nd, the Northport Art Center met with city manager Jerome Fletcher and his team to talk about the future of the Northport Art Center and Warm Mineral Springs. At that time, we were provided with information that the city would be working on a memorandum of understanding and that the city attorney would work on a new lease for the property where we are going to be vacating very shortly. The deadline for that, realistically, hopefully, is September 1st of this year. At that same meeting, we were invited to attend this workshop to talk about the Northport Art Center. The Northport Art Center is committed to returning to the Sam Shapos Way with a new destination art center, maintaining the same welcoming environment it has demonstrated for more than 18 years. Online research states Northport, Florida has a developing art scene with public art installations, murals, a dedicated art center, and parks which feature sculptures like King Neptune. The city's website says the Northport is home to an active up-and-coming arts community. It encourages residents to visit the Northport Art Center to take classes or view the most recent art gallery. Currently, the art gallery show is black and white with color. Later this month, the theme is pop art. It's also going to be Caribbean art because we will be celebrating the Caribbean-American cultural connection. This is their month. The Northport Art Center addresses three of the city's strategic pillars. Economic development and growth management, quality of life, and community engagement and communications. Before companies move their business to a community, they check out a variety of resources available in their future location, including the focus on arts and culture. A community that fosters a variety of activities for families strengthens the community and ensures sustainability. As you can see on this slide, we have some of our students, future designers and builders. In the background, you'll see they have created floor plans for their future art center. Youth programs develop future leaders, promote self-esteem, critical thinking skills, and allows for development of creative ideas. In this scene, you're going to see two young brothers that have come together. They're future entrepreneurs. They put together a lemonade stand because they wanted to raise a million dollars for the new art center. Research shows that art improves quality of life, it can calm nerves, reduce blood pressure, foster goodwill, develop individual self-esteem, ignite creativity, eliminate isolation, create healthy social interaction, and improve economic resources in the community. The Northport Art Center has met quality of life pillar through several programs, including arts programs for autistic children at the Lotus Center, clients of the Loveland Center, arts programs for seniors and veterans' arts workshop. If you look in the upper left-hand corner there, you'll see Herschel Maine. He's only been involved in the arts for the past three years. For the past two years, he has received an award from the National Veterans Creative Arts Competition. He came to the arts program because he needed connection after the loss of his wife. For combat veterans of recent or previous conflicts, art therapy provides ways to express feelings and experiences that are difficult to express verbally. Art therapy helps veterans communicate and resolve traumatic memories, relieve stress, and reduce symptoms of trauma-related conditions. Sergeant Philip Moore created art for the Art of War calendar, which acquired funds for free arts workshops for veterans. The next free veteran workshop is an art composition project made with everyday projects that's going to take place on June 7th. Senior paint parties are a great way to introduce adults to the world of art. It helps them reduce isolation for individuals who have lost a partner. It encourages them to meet new people, develop friendships, and acquire a new hobby that brings joy and personal satisfaction. The Northport Arts Guild began 37 years ago with a group of artists sharing their love of art with classes and art exhibits in private homes and public locations at the Northport Art, the Northport Library. Their consistent and persistent presence in the community led the city commissioners of Northport to offer the guild a gently-used building. One of our founders here, thank you very much for being here, Kathy. The gently-used building actually created the Northport Art Center. It's been battered by several hurricanes. The city determined that the buildings used by the Northport Art Center must be demolished, advising the art center that it needs to vacate the buildings by September 1st. Demolition, I understand, will begin October 2025. Until the Northport Art Center can establish a new art center, it may temporarily revert to the former guild status, providing classes in public and private places. This past weekend, there was a workshop held called Paint From Your Soul, thanks to Lake Michigan Credit Union in Fort Charlotte. The Northport Art Center has a temporary, indeterminate amount of time to be able to use the second-story classroom for classes. We're going to have scratchboard beginning there in June. We'll have other classes beginning there in September. The youth arts instructors are considering use of the Scout House at Dallas White Park for educational arts programs for area homeschool students to resume in the fall. Our programs for youth are not ordinary arts classes. In fact, one of the classes that they had, the students learned about and how to create a robotic arm, a contiki raft, a catapult, and a sputnik rocket. These are special programs provided by the art instructors at the Northport Art Center. Over the years, the Northport Art Center has provided opportunities for volunteers of all ages in a variety of areas. It provides art in public places here at City Hall, the Welcome Center at Welland Park, the Northport Library, senior services, and several real estate offices. It hosts gallery awards, receptions to show off and sponsor and support the local and visiting artists. It invites the community to attend these events without charge. It has supported the city's monthly youth arts program by providing an art instructor. The Northport Art Center participates in and provides volunteers for activities sponsored by the city and by Welland Park. The Northport Art Center seeks to meet the needs of residents of this dynamic community and to support local businesses. Businesses come to the Northport Art Center seeking artwork for display in their offices. Local artists have created numerous murals in the city of Northport. Organizations ask for free artwork to be sold at their fundraising events. The most recent donation of art was to the Northport Behavioral Health Facility for the grand opening. Artwork is the business of artists, and the artists in the Northport community have been very generous with their time and talent. For years, the Northport Art Center has looked at different locations for new, larger art center. They have conducted surveys and developed business plans. They have been discouraged and frustrated by the lack of financial resources to take the art center to the next level. The Northport Art Center Board has historically been composed of artists intent upon creating beauty for the Northport community and providing opportunities for others to experience the mental and physical benefits of creating art. Their business experience has been limited because that is not their area of expertise. In order to visualize a new future and seek financial support from foundations and philanthropists, Schinkel Schultz developed a single-level floor plan based on a visionary plan the Northport Art Center created last year. This draft floor plan includes enlarging the gallery space, increasing the number of classrooms from two to three, and enlarging the size of each classroom. It addresses the growing needs of meeting space for organizations and nonprofits. The larger meeting space can be divided into two meeting rooms that could be available at night and on the weekends as well as during the day. Because we have artists who are winter residents, we will have four artist studios available for rent. With the expansion of the art center, additional parking is required. The overflow parking on land across the street from the current location may not be available. Therefore, Schinkel Schultz is currently working on a two-story floor plan that will allow for parking on part of the current Northport footprint without deleting the meeting room or the artist studios. For the development of a new art center, it will probably result in the rebranding of the organization. From the Northport Art Center to the Center for Arts at Northport, it will require the addition of new board members to facilitate the rebirth of the vision of the Northport Area Art Guild to serve the needs of this rapidly growing community. The Center for Arts envisions future locations at Warm Mineral Springs and at Welland Park. In order for the Northport Art Center to build a new art center to meet the needs of the Northport community, Northport Center will seek the financial support from residents, from businesses, and from organizations. It will reach out to philanthropists and foundations. Without an art center in the Northport area, there will be a negative impact on this community, affecting children, adults, and veterans. The Center for Arts at Northport will continue to provide visual arts programs as it welcomes musical arts, performing arts, martial arts, and healing arts, including sound therapy, yoga, Tai Chi, and Qigong. As part of its goal to be a destination art center for the community, I had a vision, which I shared with Schinkel Schultz. I'm not sure if this vision is gonna come through, but I pictured brides walking down a spiral staircase in our two-story building into a beautiful gallery with an intimate reception in the adjacent meeting rooms. In the 2024-2025 edition of SRQ Arts Guide, I read, "The leaders of Sarasota County recognize the fact that the arts and culture act as a magnet for the area, drawing in tourists and new residents alike." Brian Hirsch, CEO of the Arts and Cultural Alliance of Sarasota, said, "Arts builds community. It's a significant part of our commerce and our economy. The arts intrinsically and by nature are something that really drives quality of life, too." Jeffrey Ken, founder and CEO of Sarasota Rising and the Living Arts Festival, commented that "The arts are so vital to our area. People take it for granted because it is such a part of their daily life. You don't know what you've got until it's gone. With the arts, we really are just another town." Aaron Dugan, president and CEO of Visit Sarasota County, stated, "When it comes to meet, marketing Sarasota County as a destination folks should want to come and visit, we're going to target arts and cultural enthusiasts. If you're a visitor, you're going to want to come back and see the Charlotte Ballet. You want to go and check out the art center down in Northport." The demolition of the buildings the Northport Art Center has used for 18 years is like drawing a line in the sand. It's time to build. No more procrastination. We have to continue with a positive impact for the Northport community, or we could all just let it wash away. Eliminate all the good that could be done for the residents and visitors of this dynamic Northport can be seen as a destination for the arts. Some would take, takes a village. It definitely requires the support of individuals, local government, and businesses, large and small. It takes people with belief and passion. It takes cooperation and collaboration. So on behalf of the Northport Art Center, as a voluntary board president, I ask the city of Northport, the commissioners, and the residents of this community to support the Northport Art Center returning to the current footprint at Sam Shapos Way. Let's begin this journey together. Let's begin this journey together.
Thank you very much. Okay. Vice Mayor?
Thank you so very much for the presentation. You know, it was very, very heartfelt. I think that the art center is a very big asset within the city of Northport and hopefully through the city and through all of your plans that we can make it a reality again. And hopefully, there's not too many interspersals in between there, you know, to where you gotta go here and you gotta go there. I think it's just basically coming up with a plan, moving forward, and let's get it done. You know, and, and I think there's a huge support here from the city. It's just going through the motions and getting it everything all. The i's dotted, the t's crossed, and, you know, we gotta see what those parameters are. But I appreciate everything that you all do. I think it's a wonderful place. I've been there quite a few times, especially when the military gentleman, Sergeant Moore, came down. What a day that was. I got to meet him, talk to him. And the experience just talking to him made me feel great. So the artwork besides itself is very valuable to this community, especially to children, veterans, seniors. It gives them peace of mind and it gives them a purpose. So I thank you for all you did.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Well, certainly know that there's a soft spot in my heart for the art center. Having sat on that board, being a painter myself, I do appreciate the value of the arts. I also sit on the Sarasota County Tourism Council, and it pains me every time I look at the budget and numbers and see how little money finds its way down to South County in the way of arts and, and culture. So, you know, I appreciate, you know, the need to create an attraction that draws people here. And, you know, I guess, you know, the present, again, Gil, thank you so much for the presentation. I know a lot of work is into it. I know this is not an easy lift. And, you know, I know what it's like trying to organize a group of people who are very artistically oriented and not business-oriented. And yet, this, this art center, you know, the Center for Arts is, is a, is an important part of any good community. And, and it's, we need to somehow find a way to perpetuate it. My question is this: What are you hoping the city can do for you?
We're looking for that memorandum of understanding and for a long-term lease from the city so we can go back to that property. I came up with some figures because it said, how are we going to raise the money? One of the big issues, we need to have more people know what the art center is. Out of ninety thousand, I don't know. We constantly turn around and say, there's an art center here in the community? We have to do more getting out there. And I did put together a plan. Of course, someone said, "You can manipulate figures any way you want to." The ways that residents can get involved, even if we had thirty thousand residents that would donate twenty dollars a month for twelve months, we'd have over seven million dollars. The objective here is for us to go ahead and spread the information out there to let them know what we have, what we're going to do, what it brings back to this community, how they can have a personal impact in making this a possibility for this community.
How much I know you had some plans designed for a building on that property. I assume that slide you showed us is representative of that Schinkel Schultz put together. How, I mean, what kind of price tag is on that building?
That, that particular one, just the construction they were looking at, at the five-point-five million to seven-point-five million. We took that to our April twenty-second meeting with the, with the city manager and his team. And it's a little bit larger than, than the present location. We looked at this. There are some issues that we have to look at as far as floodplain, and that's one of the reasons that we're talking to Schinkel and Schultz about doing a two-story, because we also, we had thought we'd be able to have some parking across the road from us. That may not be acceptable, may not be available. So we need to go ahead and move more parking back for space here. The only way that we can do that on, on the footprint that we're on right now is to have a two-story building. That, I don't have that floor plan in hand yet, but I know I did talk with them. And we're looking at coming up with a two-story floor plan so that, I don't have that particular. But I'm looking at probably, we're looking at seven-point-five million.
How, what timeframe is it?
Well, as I said right here, if we could go ahead. I know some people, when they've done schedules of trying to go ahead and bring money, it could be three to five years before we'd be able to get all the money and start doing the construction on that. I'm ideally, if we can go ahead and get some residents to go ahead and start doing monthly donations of ten, fifteen, twenty dollars a month, we could have, I did wonder right here, I know this is totally out of whack, but I thought, wow, if we had fifty thousand residents making fifteen dollars a month for nine months, we'd have over six million dollars. The objective is we need to get, light a fire under the residents of this community to go ahead and make a small donation every month so they can have an art center that will last them for years. It's going to help the children in this community. It's going to help the seniors. It's going to help the veterans. So I need people in this community, people who are, who watch this, to go ahead and spread the word so we can go ahead and start collecting the money to build this art center for this community.
Have you, just as a quick aside, then I have another question. Have you guys had any discussions with, with STC over at the Technical College about what space capabilities they might have or might have in the near future?
No, so I have not.
Okay. Just wondering, because again, you know, our, I mean, we know the high school in Northport's gonna have a major renovation and upgrade. You know, I'm just trying to think. I mean, basically, the ask here is that the city eventually, I mean, cut through, everything is, the ask is gonna be for the city to set aside this parcel of land where you are right now, perhaps, you know, demolish the building, but set this piece of land aside for some extended period of years while the art center try to raise seven million dollars to build a building on it. And then I assume a, a long-term lease beyond that. So, you know, that is the ask. I mean, not to say that's a realistic or unrealistic ask. And, and knowing the need for art and culture in this city, I think it's important that we, we try to find a way to address all this. I just, you know, I find like you, extreme frustration at the inability to raise the kind of money necessary in order to make this a reality and to perpetuate this, this, you know, center of the arts. You know, it, it concerns me when I see in Englewood a center that was vibrant, active, community-engaged. Frankly, I, I thought at one time maybe there could be a collaboration between the two, but realizing that it's controlled by Ringling, realizing that Ringling is a business, as, as is, quite frankly, everything these days. It's all dollars and cents. You know, they found it in their infinite wisdom to consolidate. So, you know, here in a time when community, arts, and, and, you know, are sorely needed, Englewood now will not have that. And people will have to travel to Sarasota in order to be part of that. Yet, you know, there are others who have created, you know, art pop-ups throughout the area who work and engage small groups of people who have specific interests in the arts and culture. And, you know, that kind of grassroots, you know, approach may be, you know, the future. Because the, the dollars available for arts and entertainment are dwindling. I hate to say it. You can see it at the county level. You can see what's going on. There's, from the top on down, there's less and less money being pushed towards them. And as far as finding those folks out there who are patrons of the arts, who are willing to donate, you know, hundreds of thousands and millions of dollars, you know, they are somewhat far and few between, you know, few and far between. And, and, and we don't have it quite as many in, in this geographic area. So, you know, I applaud the effort, I do. And, and the city, you know, from, from a commissioner's standpoint, I, I obviously want to try to do everything we can do to help. I just don't know how much we can do. Again, you know, dedicating this land is something the commission will have to talk about and, and, and try to, you know, wrap their heads around. But, you know, I certainly, personally, will try to do everything I can to encourage people to focus on this. I, I do, I do as a, as a member of that, you know, tourism group up there. And, and, you know, I, I, I have a, a very difficult time even getting them to come down here and listen to our corral or, or symphony. And, and, you know, it's a frustration. Yet, yet I know Erin and her people are working very hard. And I understand that the dollars they utilize are bed tax dollars. And, and bed tax has to feed bed tax, and we don't have but one bloody hotel right now. And so I get how all this works, but it is a Herculean effort. I applaud you for it. I, I will personally do everything I can. And as a commission, I hope we can support you guys. So, thank you.
One thing I, I was surprised to learn is we, this weekend, the workshop that we had, there were two ladies that came down from Bradenton, Fort Charlotte, to attend that. And we're looking at having more of these types of workshops. The only place that we know that we have a classroom right now is at the Lake Michigan Credit Union. And we don't know exactly how long that's gonna be, so we're gonna make as good advantage of that as we possibly can. There's, there's, there's people out there that have come forward to approach me, business people, that I already have talked to them about reaching out to put more business people on our board. Artists are wonderful. Someone say, they're a whole different creature, right? So there's, yeah, we have to have artists because that's, that's a heart of the community. But we have to have the business people that can go ahead and, and kind of do the dollars and cents for us.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Petro?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanna thank you, Ms. West, for your passion and for your enthusiasm in promoting this cause. Personally, I'm well, in support of this cause. And I think it promotes economic development by bringing artists from all over the place. It promotes community engagement. It supports and promotes for sure quality of life. And I do believe Northport Art Center is an integral part of our community. It's a part of a younger generation, older, and everything in between. I do, however, think that it is, well, I want to encourage you, and I do want to say this, that it is very possible to raise those money. We just have to find those people. Personally, I'm, I'm willing to help as much as I can as a board member as well. But I do believe that there are people out there that are willing to donate. We just have to find them. Do you have the actual person who does or will be doing fundraising?
We have, we have, we're putting together a team. One of the reasons that we had the meeting with Jerome on the twenty-second is because I had a homeschool mother had a president of a foundation contact me. One of the things they said, you need to have a lease, something that shows sustainability. Without that, foundations, philanthropists will not support your organization. Without having a floor plan, we could not go out and say, "Well, we, we know we have to go someplace. We just don't know where we're going. We don't know what it looks like." The floor plan gave us the beginning of stability. The next step is we need to have a lease from the city to say, "Yes, this is where we can go to." Therefore, then we can go out and really reach out to the foundations and philanthropists in the community. I just presented what we need from the residents. Residents need to be involved. We want to get more people in the community involved in helping raise the funds here. But we're also gonna be going out to philanthropists and foundations. But we couldn't do that without having a lease, without having a floor plan to start with.
And I don't know all the logistics, but have you reached out to the communication department or to the city manager to promote that cause of fundraising?
We haven't done that until we, it's the same question. I can't tell you exactly what the building's gonna cost without having a look at that floor plan. And I know that Schinkel Schultz has been, they, they worked with the city to go ahead and get some information. They're gonna be working more on that to finalize what the property's gonna look like if we're on that site. But we're not expecting, I've talked to the city manager. We don't expect any money from the city. We understand, we understand the financial logistics there. We just need to have that lease so we can go back to the same piece of property. We've looked at this for the last couple of years. My understanding is there has not been anyone else who is interested in that piece of property. Prior to that, there had been different plans that came and went away and came and went away, and then it came back because no one else is looking for it. And that's why we continue to say we want to come back to the same piece of property.
I was not referring to, for the city to solicit the city for the funds, but rather using the communication department to fundraise this cause.
We haven't looked at that yet. I would have to talk.
Also, as a suggestion, I don't know, again, the logistics, but maybe the Chamber of Commerce, there are a lot of business people.
Oh, yes.
So maybe you can reach out to them and.
Yes, we are a member of the, the Northport Chamber of Commerce.
To promote, like, to get your message out. But I really thank you for your passion and.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for doing.
And I'm not an artist. I've attended for art classes.
But what you do is important, and I think.
My grandkids go, my grandkids have gone to the arts programs. In fact, they're probably at, at the camp right now.
And I thank the founder and for all of you for being here. Thank you, Mayor.
I would ask city manager, do we, does staff have any recommendations here or any asks of commission or any suggestions or any ideas that they wish commission to entertain with regard to this matter? Or is that something you all are planning to bring back at another date, another time? I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, the MOU she mentioned is what we need you to weigh in on. And we're working on that and what it will look like in front of you. So, the meeting today was to make sure that we're all on the same page with how we can assist the art center. Not, like she said, they're not asking for financial assistance. And we recognize that they do need help with communication, but their communication is asking the citizens to pay a little bit of money now for something that is a long-term benefit for the city. And we just failed at doing that exact same thing with the police headquarters. So I'm not sure if we are the best audience to help communicate that. I think we should try and help if we could. I think that anyone watching and knows that the art center is important to the city, it's a valuable asset for the city, and they're going through a tough time right now. And in addition to providing the land, which she said, you know, people come back and forth regarding how we should use that land, but it always comes back to the same thing. It doesn't kind of work itself out. So why would we not sort of embrace them remaining there and help them find the right structure and footprint so they can have some long-term success? So we're still talking to them and working with them and wanted to make sure that the board was on the same page so we can keep moving forward before we get to the end of September.
Thank you, sir. Anything else to that, commissioners? Any public comment? Then I thank you again, and the three of you for coming and providing support. All right, moving on to general business. Day twenty-five dash twenty-two forty-seven, discussion of possible action regarding Unified Land Development Code, Section three-point-two-point-three-point-B, non-residential uses in the corridor, transitional, and corridor zoning districts on hours of operation. City manager, write them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am going to turn this over to Deputy Services Director, Lori Barnes, to introduce the item and lead us to the conversation.
Good morning, Mayor. Commissioner's Lori Barnes, Deputy Director of Development Services. This morning, for this item, I'm presenting on behalf of the Economic Development Division. We have noticed since the adoption of the new Unified Land Development Code that there are some challenges in the corridor and corridor transitional districts as far as the hours of operation limitations that the commission incorporated into that section of code. Staff initially did not propose an hour, hours of operation restriction for those zoning districts because similar to the neighborhood commercial designation, which was a former zoning under the old code that was applied along corridors, had that same hours of operation restriction. That was applied along corridors had that same hours of operation restriction. In ten years, the only development the city saw in those zoning districts was the Dollar General. We have on the economic development front received plenty of inquiries about future development in these corridor districts. And upon learning that the hours of operation limitation applied. They did not pursue those locations for relocation or location of their businesses. Think about a restaurant. What restaurant is going to be closed up, cleaned up, no outdoor cleanup, no deliveries? By ten P M. It it doesn't provide for a financially feasible business model for those types of businesses. So staff is requesting that the commission discuss and consider. Altering or eliminating those hours of operation restrictions in corridor and C T zoning districts. And if the commission directs staff to bring forward an amendment, we'll likely package it with a U L D C amendment. That incorporates some other tweaks that we are currently tracking as far as a cleanup ordinance for the U L D C. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioners. So. Ms. Laurie, would you? So right now, the hours that are that no operations are allowed are from ten P M to five A M in the morning.
Correct.
And you say that there there have been businesses. Is there a way to quantify them, like how many are are we talking about who? Because I'm I'm thinking of like where these, you know, these corridor transitional and and corridor zoning districts are. I mean, you know.
Along Price Boulevard and along our north south Collector Road corridors. One in particular comes to mind of proposed development on a large tract on the Biscayne area. We had a developer interested in pursuing a mixed use development there. They could not engage potential end users for their commercial component, including a restaurant and a fraternal organization. Because of those hours of operation limitation. Another along Price Boulevard. There was an individual who was interested in entertainment type venue. That did not pursue that land either because of that hours of operation limitation.
See, because Mike, I mean, obviously those those are corridors that we have a significant amount of residents in. They are areas that are U L D C rezoned, obviously, in most cases or in some cases. You know, ten o'clock, I mean, I I personally, I'm not in favor of eliminating them. I'm just thinking it's ten o'clock too early in the evening. Whether eleven, you know, eleven o'clock for an entertainment venue, probably still not acceptable for a restaurant. Very well may be. Most restaurants stop serving eight thirty, nine thirty in that range. By ten to eleven, they ought to be able to wrap up and and close up operation. Maybe it needs to be midnight, but my concern is we have people who are living there. We've we've, you know, we've rezoned and there are certain types of businesses, non residential uses. That have more business hour related, that that are more business hour related. Which maybe are the best types of businesses to go there, even if we miss out on some opportunities to attract certain other types of business. I'm not sure along Price Boulevard might be the greatest area for an entertainment venue. Or along Biscayne for a restaurant, you know, if it's right in the middle of of a residential section. You know, I mean, we have to appreciate that while that may be a reason. A business might give. There are just certain areas that we've rezoned that, you know, we should, I think, use some level of common sense. And and look at who lives there and should should those types of businesses be there? I mean, I I, you know, Laura knows, everybody knows how much I push economic development. But but the reality is certain businesses just don't fit certain places. And if you just eliminate hours, you know, then if you look at the zoning map, all kinds of things can go there. And maybe things that are not a good idea. They should be elsewhere. And so I'm open minded to adjusting. The hour of ten a little bit. I I think five A M is just fine, but, you know, because at six A M in the morning, if there's delivery trucks outside, you know. And I live, you know, a a house or two over, you know, it might be somewhat disturbing to me. But five is okay, ten, maybe that should be eleven, or maybe it should be eleven thirty, or maybe it should be twelve. I don't know what everybody else is thinking, but, you know. I just think that we have to be careful what we do with regard to this. Because the whole rezoning was a sensitive item. And we don't want to just say, well, now we're rezoned and these types of businesses are allowable here. So, you know, we'll just. Go ahead and eliminate the hours and let, as long as it's zoned appropriately, we'll just let businesses move in. I mean, I I think that would be a a level of insensitivity that we may not want to go down that path necessarily. So I don't have a problem keeping some hours. I just think maybe we need to think about what they should be or if we should revise them. Commissioner Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor. The whole rezoning effort, we all know how difficult that process was. So my initial reaction is please, we've only been at this for a few months. I have a hard time thinking about. Making it any more aggressive than it already is. Having said that, however. I think I would be open to either adjusting or eliminating the hours on a corridor. But the transitional corridors. Those rezoned areas are right smack dab in the middle of single family homes. And in my mind. I envisioned businesses with sort of a home footprint. And and the two areas I had in my mind for the corridor. Was when when you go down Fruitville in Sarasota, there are some cute little Victorian houses. And there's a boba tea place and there's a breakfast place. And they're very soft, gentle kinds of businesses. I certainly don't see a Denny's. You know what I'm saying? It's like, the other area is in Panagorda. You know, there's really a nice integration of houses in their downtown area. And there's a breakfast place and there's a residential place right next to it, but it just sort of flows and works. And and in that kind of business, I don't see a big delivery truck showing up at five o'clock in the morning. To fuel that kind of business. So, I mean, I haven't made up my mind, but but my gut is yelling. That the transitional corridors, we really need to leave as they are. I would be open to something making either extending the hours or eliminating the hours on the corridor. But overall, this was a really painful process for this city. And it's only been, what, seven or eight months since the U L D C went into effect at the end of October. So I I just have a disinclination to make any really substantive changes at this point. Again, I would be open on the corridor, but way more reluctant on the transitional corridors.
Mr. Mayor, just as a reminder to the new commissioners and to the public. When when the corridor allowable uses were presented to the commission during the workshop processes. And even the adoption hearing involved a whittling down of those uses that were going to be allowed in C T and corridor. To. Ensure that those types of businesses were capable of being compatible with residential. And then also the incorporation of those compatibility standards in the Unified Land Development Code. And as far as, you know, the hours of operation and disturbance, we do have a noise ordinance. That applies to not just business community, but residences. So there are some safeguards in place and I know Ms. Ray wanted to weigh in on something as well.
Good morning, Elena Ray, Director of Development Services. We agree that we want to be very careful with the hours of operation, especially where we have residences very close to these properties. However, I'll remind you that as far as that ten o'clock cutoff, we have a ten year history. Of those hours not working. So even though the U L D C is, the the new U L D C is is relatively new. Prior to that, we have a ten year history of having a ten o'clock P M cutoff. For the neighborhood commercial district, which some of the, all of those neighborhood commercials properties were rezoned. Some of them, I'll give you a, give you an example where Dollar General is, that entire intersection, those are large parcels. And they were zoned neighborhood commercial. They're now zoned corridor transitional. So they have a ten P M cutoff. Those are very large properties. They didn't develop for ten years because one, one of the things we kept hearing over and over is because of that ten o'clock cutoff. So something like a small neighborhood restaurant or. Pub, something like that could not go in there. Because that ten, that ten P M cutoff is is problematic for them. I would encourage the commission to perhaps discuss extending the hours if there's there's a level of discomfort with eliminating them. Would encourage you to to talk about the pros and cons of of perhaps extending those hours so that we could attract some businesses that would serve those residents. That they could walk to and and enjoy in their neighborhoods. But continuing that that ten P M cutoff is likely going to see us repeat. The same results that we've had over the last ten years in that in those districts.
Mr. Petro.
Just a question for now. So hours of operation is my understanding is that that those hours are open to public operation. Is that correct?
No, sir. It's no business operations between ten P M and five A M. So a restaurant, for example, they serve until. Nine or ten o'clock at night, but let's say ten o'clock for argument's sake. The staff can't clean up and take trash out to the dumpster at ten o'clock. They can't have a delivery come in at midnight. They can't have a delivery come in at four A M. You know. Think about garbage trucks. When does our solid waste divisions trucks start going out on the roadways and serving neighborhoods? So it's not just open for for the public. It's any business operations the way the regulations are currently written.
And in my understanding, if the. Location of a commercial, now commercial with new U L D C. They still have a limitation. They can't just go on and on and do like a car shop. They cannot bang the hammers after ten o'clock. Is that correct or?
We have a noise ordinance that provides for a limitation on the decibel levels of certain activities. During a period of, I. I don't want to be quoted. I I can't quote the exact times in the noise ordinance. It is enforced by the police department. So there are limitations to construction activities and and noise levels of other activities within the city during. The nighttime or the overnight time.
I'm a, I'm a little bit hesitant to change the hours of operation. In a commercial transitional. It's such a close proximity to the single family residential houses in the area. If we look at the map, that's like right right next to it. I don't know, it's. It will affect the quality of life, but yeah, we can have more discussion on that. But I think it's, it will affect the quality of life. I would not want to be next to, you said that entertainment.
Entertainment, it was a mini golf.
But wouldn't they close at ten o'clock anyways? I mean, it's.
They might close at ten o'clock, but they might have other business activities that need to be conducted after ten o'clock. Cleaning up the trash in the parking lot, emptying the trash. I I don't know what types of maintenance activities they might do, but there 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 is some reluctance. On the part of businesses to locate or relocate with these hours of operations limitations. Again, we have a ten year history with the neighborhood commercial and over and over, those limitations were quoted as the reasoning. There is also in the regulations currently that no waivers will be granted to those business hours of operations. So, you know, if there is consensus amongst the commission to, you know, maybe adjust those hours of operation. And then perhaps eliminate that language that prohibits waivers and allow the commission to approve a waiver for a particular business. That needs past eleven P M, for example.
What hours would you suggest? I mean, twenty four seven is out of out of my discussion. I mean, I would not go twenty four seven, but what would you suggest?
What I would, what I would suggest, if the commission does appear to have some consensus to consider changing these hours. Is for us to take a look at certain business models and determine what their regular operating hours are. And how much is a reasonable timeframe after they're closing to the public to close out the business activities for the evening? We can certainly bring something back as a follow up workshop item or as a proposed ordinance backed with that statistical data. For the commission to consider.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor. Yeah, this is a good discussion. I I I do believe that the hours need to be adjusted. I don't know about the twenty four seven. I would like to have a conversation about that. But let's take a little dive into Northport's history. It was mostly residential with very few businesses in Northport. Go up and down forty one and look at the businesses, twenty four seven, twelve o'clock, one o'clock, two o'clock. With homes right directly behind them. And we don't hear very many complaints about what's going on. So I would like to look at the types of businesses thoroughly and and adjust those hours. I got no issues with adjusting it a wee bit. Maybe midnight would be the cutoff or whatever's comfortable with the board. But if they've been sitting there for ten years. They're going to sit there for another ten years. So why did we even change the zoning to invite businesses in if we're going to handcuff them? And not allow them in because of their business practices? So I think the discussion definitely needs to be had. And and I understand the residents out there, they're worried about their area and what's coming into their area. But depending on the business, it might be something that's welcome in their area. We don't know until we have those discussions. So I'm I'm in favor of looking at it. There's no guarantee, but let's discuss it as a board, look at it, maybe an adjustment. You know. Some other areas, they shut down at two o'clock in the morning and then open back up at five o'clock in the morning, depending on the businesses. Not saying that's good for Northport, but an adjustment, I think, should be had, a discussion on. Because we're just holding up vacant property out there for no reason, in my opinion. That needs to be developed and that's why we went through the rezoning is to get commercial in here. So let's look at each on a case by case scenario down the road, but let's get a picture set out there to where people can say, okay, I want to come or I don't want to come. But adjusting those hours is a key. So that's where I'm at. That's all I have, Mayor. That's all I have, Mayor.
Mr. Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor. I think there are a lot of reasons in the past why businesses didn't come to this city. I'm, I'm not going to go through them from my point of view. The only real line of sight I had in the past was right across the street from the Dollar General, I believe, a, a gas station and car wash wanted to go in there, and they wanted some waivers. And as business-oriented as I am, I was very happy that that project went away. I just didn't think that that type of business belonged there anyway. And then to want to extend the hours and intensity, I just thought was not the right kind of development for that area. Like Vice Mayor, I mean, I'm open-minded about it. And when I think about the corridor and when I think about price, I, I totally understand there are a lot of single-family homes on price, but that road is about to be widened to four, five lanes, actually. And that will have long-term a tremendous impact on the desirability of that area for residential use, let's face it. I also personally believe that homeowners along price will not lose money. I think they'll be able to sell their properties for commercial use, maybe for more even than selling their property for another residential use. So again, where, where a road is, is going to be four lanes like price, that is the perfect time to really revisit a lot of the, the business regulations. Again, I'm, I'm way more open-minded to the corridor, you know, the corridor zoning areas. I question whether the intersections of price and the ma- major collector roads, maybe, you know, transitional corridor isn't the best zoning, but I'm not suggesting a zoning change for those areas. I would be really open with some parameters, case by case, coming to the commission to make variances of hours or that type of thing in the transitional corridor zoning areas. And I would be interested in, in what kind of parameters. I'd want to see some rules around that so that we can be consistent in applying those rules. I, I don't want it to be sort of a willy-nilly discretion of the commission. I'd like some structure so that we're consistent in how we evaluate those requests. But again, we have just gone through a very painful rezoning process in this city. And so I, I don't want to make major wholesale changes at this point, you know, outside of, you know, corridor and, and maybe having the opportunity to evaluate variances or whatever in the transitional corridor zoning areas.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think that we have a feeling of a general openness to, or willingness to consider some kind of modification to this section. So with the commission's permission, what staff would like to do is perhaps put together some more refined options with some data to back that approach and provide the commission with pros and cons for each of those options at a future workshop.
Just one other, if I'm, if I may, ma'am. I really don't want to see another storage facility on price. While we're looking at it, can we maybe take just a little peek without opening Pandora's box on allowable uses? I think over time, we wind up getting plenty of something. We might not need more of that something in certain areas. You get my drift?
Yes, ma'am.
Because we need higher uses in those major areas, because we don't have a ton of commercially zoned areas, folks, and we need to, we can't keep giving up prime locations to things that don't add a lot of value to the community. Zip.
Commissioner Duval.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I say anything, let me preface my statements by saying that Development Services is, the whole purpose is to service development, which means your focus is on businesses. Whereas a commissioner, I have to look at the whole of the citizenry, the whole of the, the city, businesses and residents. And as Commissioner Langdon has already mentioned, the new ULDC is less than a year old. And a lot of time was spent on that, and now we're looking to make what I would consider would be a major adjustment. And as far as, one of the first things you mentioned was, imagine a restaurant closes at 10 o'clock, you know, they still have, you know, they're not going to serve any food, but they still have other things to do, take out the garbage. Do you know what an industrial garbage dumpster, the cover on it sounds like when it slams down at night? It's a loud noise. When a tractor trailer separates the cab from the trailer, there's some loud noises there. When a truck backs into a dock and hits a dock, it makes a loud noise. What I'm concerned about is, and as Commissioner Langdon mentioned, Price Boulevard, those people who live on Price Boulevard, as I've already seen with some of the real estate properties of the city, a lot of people owned empty lots and they were, you know, residential. Now they can't build a house on them, but I've heard in more than one place that those properties are more valuable now than they were before. So those people that own those properties, they may be able to, you know, make a decent deal, you know, to move their house somewhere else. Now, in regards to price, as Commissioner Langdon mentioned, some of those properties may become quite more valuable and, and eventually, price isn't going to be meant to be residential. What my problem is with those people that live one street behind, you know, that the back of their house is now going to be the back of an establishment, those are the people I worry about. And that's where someone has already mentioned, looking at this in another workshop and maybe doing something on a case-by-case basis, depending on the type of business that may or may not be in a certain location. Like O'Rourke, Cleto Blade, right now in the, near the Sarasota Memorial Hospital Emergency Room, there are a series of businesses in there, and some of them are restaurants. And those restaurants close up at a reasonably early hour. Now, if you had one of those restaurants in one of these corridors on there, fine, it shouldn't cause much problem. But now you put a bar in there that may have music, may serve, you know, they have celebrations on Mardi Gras, St. Patrick's Day, and every other holiday. And now you have people bothering residents that are nearby at late hours, and that's a concern. So I would definitely entertain some more workshops on this. And one thing I wanted to mention before I finish was that there was an email from former Commissioner McDowell this morning, and it mentioned that as part of this presentation, the current zoning map wasn't included in the backup materials. And for, for somebody like me, yeah, eventually I can find those maps on my own, but it's a lot easier if you find them for me because you're familiar with them. If I have to go searching for them, I waste a lot of time. So I, I found her suggestion helpful. And please, some of my comments may sound negative, but I don't mean them in a negative manner. I just want to look at the pluses and the minuses before I said, yeah, let's go ahead and do this. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, it's a good conversation. Interestingly enough, while, since with the diversity of types of businesses and the uniqueness to individual neighborhoods and streets, one might think the idea of waivers that would allow commission to customize, so to speak, would be a good thing. I'm not necessarily so sure that is a good idea. The thought that for every waiver request that comes before the commission, we're going to have a roundtable dialogue with community engagement, and I wonder how much the influence of the loudest voices will have on commission's present and/or future. It seems like a pretty helter-skelter way to try to figure it out and determine, well, you know, do the neighbors in this neighborhood like the idea of having a little bar restaurant, a little Italian place that serves, you know, has a little bar and could go till 11 or 12 o'clock, and for this neighborhood, they like it, but on two neighborhoods over where the situation's the same, those people don't want anything there. I think we're opening up a nightmare to try to figure out how you manage this. You know, maybe we're overdoing it. I, I, at, at the risk of sounding a little bit, I don't know what the word would be, 10 years of history and we, you know, we did, did, in that 10-year history, did we hear much from businesses who said, geez, if this was only 11 o'clock, I could have lived with this, but 10 o'clock just doesn't work for me? Or were most of them, and how many, were there hundreds, were there 10, were there five, were there three over 10 years, that said, I really need 24/7 access to my property in order to relocate there? So I don't really know, like, and understand 10 years worth of history and we don't know. I, you know, off the cuff, I would say, you move this back from 10 o'clock to 11. And like, I can't imagine many businesses that this doesn't work for, except those businesses that nobody would probably want in a neighborhood anyway. So, you know, maybe we're overthinking this and over worrying about it, and maybe a tweak of one hour would, would be the difference. But I, I really have a hard time. If a business actually conditioned, it's moving to a transitional car, car, one of these like streets and said, no, just can't find my way to, to, to want to do this for the single reason that, that the hours were terrible, like if that was an hour later or two hours later, I would have done it. I, I would think we would know that already. So I'm not so sure that their reasons were just that, but maybe I'm wrong. I don't know. So again, I'm, I'm not in big favor of waivers. I, I, I just think it's opened up a nightmare. But I certainly would entertain like tweaking this an hour or so, because to me, 11 o'clock's not unreasonable. If we have a problem with certain uses within a certain street, I mean, I can't, I can't even figure how many tens of dozens of maybe hundreds of hours went into the efforts to do the ULDC and the discussions we had and over and over about what usage is in what areas. So I don't really want to go revisit that all over again. But were, but were there to be a type of business that is a problem, child, then let's address it. You know, if, if by extending this to 10 to 11 or 11:30 or whatever would open up a problem with regard to certain approved businesses in those corridors, then maybe as part of this adjustment of hours, we could take a couple of usages and just say, hey, sorry, in these corridors, we're not going to allow those, and make a couple of minor changes. If in the overall picture, it would be more beneficial to increase the hour of operation here, or, you know, from 10 to 11, or, I just think that's the better way to go if we're going to do it, or simply to say, well, let's just not do anything for a year or two or three or four or five and see how things develop. But I fear what you guys have said is true, that it might be another three, four, or five years that nothing happens there. So I feel like we, we ought to address it, but we ought to be real careful what we do here, because, you know, Commissioner Duval made some pretty insightful observations, which, you know, quite frankly, I would hope all of us are sensitive to. Anyway, Commissioner Petro?
Thank you, Mayor. The state that I used to live in before, it was a Home Depot that was 24/7. And it was amazing to me to see that the store was operational, because only from my estimate, it would be like one, two people would come at night, if any. So the store was empty with the exception of the employees. Our current Walmart on 41 closes at 11 o'clock. So, I mean, I want to be home by nine, the latest. But I can see the, the mayor's point, with the only exception of restaurants, that they can be open one hour, and that one hour will give them the actual, a boost to close the, to close the doors, so, so to speak. So I, I'm, I'm really hesitant to go more than maybe, I would, I would leave it as this for now, if I was, if it's the will of the board. But I know we have to do something. And the case by case, it's probably not realistic, although we can consider that. But again, if we have a restaurant, I'm willing to do it. But if we have a bar that plays music, even not an immediate resident, I would be opposing that. So I just, there is a balance. We have to have a balance to preserve the quality of life.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Langdon?
Yeah, just a very quick comment. The mayor has sold me on not doing variances, because I can just imagine how that would play out, and I don't think any of us want to go through that. But I see a, a real difference between a restaurant that serves alcohol and a bar that serves bar food. So if we can kind of address that, and in all honesty, I'm out and about, and every place I've ever been closes at nine, you know? I mean, even up in Sarasota, Big Top Brewery has that outdoor entertainment, they're cleared out at 9:00. So I don't understand why it works there and it doesn't work here. So anyway, that's sort of my, my last comment.
Thank you. Do you have a general direction you sort of have something to work with here?
Let, let me say, I'd, I'd like to provide a little bit of clarification. Under the current ULDC, something like a bar would need a special exception. So we've, in, in CT. So we've sort of addressed that. What we would suggest is let us come back with some potential tweaks and some more data for you and some pros and cons. One of the things that catches us up, for instance, if you have a restaurant that closes now at 9:00 or 9:30, a manager, under our current ordinances, a manager by himself or herself could not be inside the building counting the money from that day after 10:00 PM. It has no effect on anyone around them, but they couldn't be there. They couldn't even be on the property. So that, those are the kinds of, of... So that, those are the kinds of barriers that we've put up because it specifically says no business operation can happen on the property at all. If you had a business, a lot of these smaller businesses, they don't have big commercial dumpsters. They have individual cans. You couldn't open an individual plastic tote and put anything in it and close it. So I think there's room for us to look at some tweaks that would make a significant difference in attracting these businesses, yet have minimal to no impact on the surrounding neighbors. And we are very conscientious of those neighbors. We do want to minimize or eliminate impacts to them. So our ask of the commission at this point would be, allow us to go back, refine some recommendations, bring them back to you with pros, cons considerations, and also take a look at that list of uses and the zoning map, as Commissioner Duval said, and so that you can see where they are and you can take a look at which ones already require special exceptions and we can look at refining all of that for you.
Appreciate it, Ms. Lanning. Thank you very much. Do you need a consensus?
Yes, sir.
Would you like a consensus?
I'll make it. I make a consensus that we instruct city manager and staff to come back with some recommendations for adjusting the current ULDC in the corridor and transitional corridor zoning districts and some additional data that educates us on the kinds of things that are unintentionally business prevention.
Motion didn't include anything about hours.
No, bring back recommendations.
On the hours, okay. On everything. Okay. Do I have a second?
It's not a motion.
Oh, it's not a motion, so okay. I'm sorry.
The consensus.
Well, I'm going to wait to let everyone else vote first.
I'm a yes.
Mr. Petrov. Vice Mayor?
That's it, yes.
Yes. You're a yes. I'm a yes.
Okay.
Before we, oh, any public comments on this?
Of course.
Debbie McDowell, the existing code prohibits hours of operation in the commercial transitional zoning between 10 p.m. and 5 a.m. Ask staff to put the current zoning map on the screen so you can see the commercial transitional is next door to existing residential homes. Please do not change the hours of operation in the CT district. To allow a 24/7 restaurants, which nowadays has outside dining, is incompatible with residential homes, the noise will carry. To allow a 24/7 retail establishment next to homes, we'll open the doors box to all sorts of 24/7 activities. Besides noise, please protect our established neighborhoods and keep the existing hours of operation in place. FYI, the commission unanimously agreed to keep these hours of operation as a way to protect existing residents when the new ULDC was adopted. Thank you. And that's all.
All right, thank you. Before we go on, city manager, could you at some point have IT take a look at not just this meeting, but the last meeting or two we've had? There's a real disconnect between our speaking voices and our mouths. It is very distracting to people. I watched back our last meeting and there's like no synchronism. I got a couple of texts today about this meeting being the same way. So it didn't used to be that way. So it's something that went a little off kilter, but if we could have IT check that, that'd be great.
There goes Ms. Jewell.
There you go. Just so we see. What do you think? We've been at it two hours. I know we only have one item. Does anybody need a quick health break?
I took one.
10 minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, I hate to do it for one item, but I also need, let you run it. Just, how do you guys feel? Yeah, take 10, be back here at 12:10 or 12:20, I'm sorry. I would just have it set right.
Northport now will be released bi-weekly.
All right, we're back in session here. And moving on to final item, B 25-2248, discussion and possible action regarding the Code of the City of Northport, Florida, Chapter 6, Alcoholic Beverages, Section 6-4, sales near churches or schools. City manager, this is your item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll turn it back over to Lori Barnes, Deputy Director of Development Services, for a presentation and conversation.
Thank you, sir. Lori Barnes, Deputy Director of Development Services, presenting today on behalf of the Economic Development Division. The city code addresses consumption on premises of alcoholic beverages. This Chapter 6 provision regarding alcoholic beverages and distances between those establishments serving alcohol and churches and schools has not been revisited by the city commission since 1990. The city's current regulations are significantly more restrictive than those of our surrounding communities, and we're finding that these limitations, because they're so broad, are actually complicating economic development projects in the city of Northport. One example would be the Sarasota County Technical College out parcels. The way the regulations are currently written, those regulations apply to the Sarasota County Technical School, despite the fact that it's not a K through 12 operation. So a hotel wanting to locate on those Sarasota Technical College out parcels could not. A restaurant, other than a fast food restaurant that serves no alcoholic beverages, could not locate on those parcels. Similarly, we have some other corridor, corridor transitional, and even commercial zoning districts in the city that are in close enough approximation to churches and schools, the 800 feet, wherein they would not be able to serve alcoholic beverages at a restaurant or at a pop-stroke golf or at a bowling alley. So we wanted to bring this to the commission's attention, and we did provide four potential amendments to the city code that would relax those requirements while still placing some limitations on the more intensive type uses, like a standalone bar versus a restaurant. And we've also included the City of Sarasota, Sarasota County, and City of Venice regulations for your information in considering this item. So staff would request that the commission give direction to prepare amendments to the code as outlined in the staff summary, items 1 through 4, or some other commission preferred alternative. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, the question that I have, and I know this has taken place since the 90s, is, I'm going to use this as an example, San Pedro Church, they put on their yearly bazaar and festival and stuff like that, and they have a beer tent there. They're serving beer right on the property, and that's one of their biggest fundraising things. Now, in the current time, do they get a permit or something to serve the alcohol there throughout the festival?
They do, they do. So under the state law, anyone with a catering license can serve alcoholic beverages in a community clubhouse at an HOA community, at a church. There are also provisions for a one, two, or three-day permit for nonprofit organizations to be given permission to serve alcoholic beverages. So that is where the church is likely, likely utilizes that program, that three-day permit program, and they have one of their partner nonprofit organizations, like the Rotary or a similar organization, actually pull the permit on their behalf.
Right, and back in the day, we used to have our festivals at Dallas White and Rotary would be the one to pull the beer tent and stuff. And it was, I just wanted to know how that worked presently before we went to change any of this, and I see the need.
Right.
You know, in certain areas and certain situations. So I'm in agreement to look at the relaxing of it and maybe not totally abolish it, but put some guidelines in and go forward with that. So I just wanted to make sure that we were still, they were still legal doing that stuff.
Yes, yes. And nothing that we're, nothing that we're proposing as far as modifying the current city code regulations would impact those nonprofit organizations from obtaining their one, two, three-day event permit as currently allowed by the state.
Okay. I thank you for that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Langdon?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I recall that there was a pizza place that wanted to go into the strip mall on Price, is a little strip mall near Atwater, and they wanted to sell beer and wine, but there's a church behind that property. And so they chose not to go in there because they couldn't sell beer and wine. So I think we definitely need to update that issue. And again, as I said earlier, I see a big difference between a restaurant that wants to sell alcoholic beverages in conjunction with food and a bar or entertainment kind of thing. So I'd be really interested in your suggestions. I don't think, shame on me, I didn't read the legislative text on this item. Did you make recommendations?
Yes, ma'am, I did.
Would you reiterate them, please?
I can. And IT, if you could put these up on the screen.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
So our recommendations were primarily would be to specify that the distance requirements only apply to businesses like bars and nightclubs. Therefore, if we had a bowling alley or if we had a brewery that served food, primarily 51% of their business, things like bowling alleys, pop-stroke golf, those type of places would not be subject to the same distance requirements as a bar or a nightclub. We would specify that the distance requirement not be imposed on businesses when a church is operating in a strip center. This happens in a lot of communities. Startup churches choose to locate in strip centers, and the balance of the businesses or the business opportunities in those strip centers are diminished because of the church location there. Think about a strip center, and this happened in my last community. It was built in the 1970s, and this particular unit in that strip center had always been a restaurant. Over and over, it changed, you know, to a different type of restaurant. They served beer and wine. Well, that business closed down, and it wasn't until a year later that an end user wanted to move into that unit, but in the meantime, a church had moved in. So this restaurant that was considering that location couldn't get an alcoholic beverage license. So, you know, when you think about giving consideration to the churches, yes, we want to do that, but if they choose to locate in a strip center, there needs to be some consideration of the economic viability of that strip center and businesses that might want to locate there. We would like to clarify that the school reference means a state accredited public or private school or preschool through high school. Under the current code, could be, you know, the daycares would be considered a school if they have educational programming. We could have the Saras, the State College of Florida, we could have the Sarasota Technical College, where they're currently included in that definition, and there's nothing we can do to allow businesses to move there and serve alcoholic beverages. So those are the four changes that we would specifically throw out there for recommendation. However, if the commission wanted to keep the 800-foot distance requirement, we could do that, provided that 1, 3, and 4 of the recommendations were agreed upon and an ordinance update. The, you know, as I mentioned, Sarasota County is 800 feet, but it doesn't apply if you only sell beer and wine. City of Venice, it's only 500 feet, and they don't oppose that on restaurants. So, you know, we definitely have the most stringent regulations, and with commission's direction, we'll bring back an ordinance to amend this so that there's some opportunity for those types of businesses in areas besides Highway 41, for example.
Anybody else? Okay. I guess you're looking, let's do a consensus. Anybody want to?
I'm happy to help. I only jotted down three of them, so I'm happy to make a consensus on three, but someone else will have to help me with the fourth one. So I'll start. I, I don't know what consensus to give on the 800 feet, because I would be open to a reduction of that, but we haven't really discussed that. So let me throw out what I thought I heard. I'm making a consensus to instruct staff to come back with changes to the ULDC that the distance restriction, whatever that might be, only applies to bar and nightclubs and not to restaurants in commercially zoned areas. Might as well take them one at a time, right?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Madam Commissioner, one clarification, these regulations are in the city code, not in the Unified Land Development Code.
Okay. So let me revise my consensus. To instruct staff to change the city code specifying that the distance requirement for, oh, oh, thank you so much. All you have to do is look up, that the distance requirements between businesses selling alcoholic beverages in churches and schools from 800 feet to 600 feet. Take them one at a time.
Back for a discussion as a regular agenda item. We're not asking anything today. I think you just need direction to come back with recommendations for the Florida.
Hit it, Vice Mayor.
Right. So if there, if there is a willingness on the part of commission to give a consensus to make the four changes that staff has recommended, and then in addition, if Commissioner Langdon wishes to reduce the distance from 800 feet to 600 feet, then we can incorporate that all into an ordinance and bring it back rather than doing another workshop.
I wasn't saying a workshop, bring it back as an agenda item.
Yes, sir.
And then we could vote on it all in one time.
Yes, sir, you certainly could.
That's all I was saying. This way, we have a broader discussion, this, that, and the other.
Good with that?
I'm good with it.
I'll make a consensus to bring back these items for discussion on a regular agenda item at a future date to be determined for the recommendations on the change in the code.
Commissioner Petrov, are you a yes or a no?
Can they be split on the agenda item or is it going to be bundled up in, or?
We'll have that discussion on the agenda item, when it comes back. This way, we can make a motion on it.
Yes. I would like to have a discussion.
I'm a yes.
I'm a yes. I'm a yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any public comment on this item? There is none. Any general public comment?
Hello, my name is Al Pikish, and I am a longtime Northport resident, Realtor, landowner, and also a member of the Northport Land Owners Association. And I'm sure that the city council is aware that Florida has a moratorium regarding the changing of city codes, rules, and regulations that make them more strict or burdensome than before Hurricane Ian. The moratorium will be lifted October 2027. The ULDC was adopted before two new city commissioners, Demetrius Petro and David Duval, were elected. Shouldn't they have some input to all the new rules and regulations? Now, there are many rules and regulations in the new ULDC that are more strict, burdensome, and are an obstacle to development. And I could give you a list. As evidence to this, I'd ask, how many commercial or industrial projects have been approved in AC 6 or AC 10 since the ULDC was adopted last October? My guess would be very few or none, especially because of the city, the city water and sewer requirement. Why not allow private well and septic until city water and sewer are available? The city is missing out on a lot of revenue. I'm 78 years old, and I want, don't want to have to wait 10 or 15 years to get my property developed.
Thank you, sir. Right. If there's nothing else, then it is 12:37, and I adjourn this meeting.
Be monthly. A schedule will be available on social media and our website.